So uh this morning and evening for us here, we will start the second Hindi Aarti which is Divya Sanatana, it was written by Mother Susan. And so as did last time for the Hindi Aarti Adisachetana, could not complete the entire deck. We'll do is, we anyway would need sessions for this Aarti, it's it's a little long and a bit complicated than the other two. So this this morning, we will first go with the transliteration and the way we pronounce the Aarti and then in the next week session, I will come back with the entire presentation, including including the the background of the Aarti and so on. If that's, yeah, I do have it, but I do have the presentation.
Gopi, can you make it hun- it's hundred and ten percent, just make it a tad bigger?
Yes, I will, I will do that, I will do that. Yeah, so I I have the presentation here, which just kind of giving the background, but what I will do is I'll not go on this because I want to include whatever text I have in the Word document into this, then we will go with the with the whole presentation next week. So it's got all the background on how the Aarti came and all that, hope you are able to see the presentation? Or you're seeing my document only?
Uh let's see, I'm seeing the English trans- English transliteration and meaning.
Okay.
So in order to show the other one, you have to stop share and share again.
Okay, I think we'll we'll go with this because anyway, I'm not going to cover the one in the presentation, so we'll go with this document. So this is the Hindi Aarti Divya Sanatana by Mother Susan. Let's start with Avtar Meher Baba Ki Jay. This Aarti was written by Mother Susan in the in the late 50s. And this was sung very often during the Guru Prasad days and in all the all the Sahas gatherings after that. And in those days, the Gujarati Aarti was only sung by the Manli, you know, within within a short group with Baba and among them, but that was not sung in any public meeting or or any meeting or any Sahas with Baba. So this Aarti was was sung usually as per what we read in 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 different books and sources. So I we will start with with the pronunciation and I'll do a better job on on the document for the for the next week, I will include this to the presentation.
Excuse me, Gopi, can I just ask one favor? Um for some reason, I can't um I can't put the tune in my mind. Could you sing maybe just the first line so that because then I'll remember which one this is? I I should know it, I should know it.
Sure. Sure, so this is uh this is among the Artes sung at the Samadhi. This goes like this. Jaha kalpana shabd na pahunche aise neti neti vedh pukare tori apar divya sanatna paramdyaagana divya sanatna paramdyaagana he jagdo dharo mehrman aarti swikaro mehrman aarti swikaro. So this is the one.
Oh beautiful.
Thank you.
Sure. So I'll go with the word by word pronunciation to start with and then we can sing the whole Aarti at the end of end of it. And as we did last time, I'll just do a recap of of the of the notations, there we have a a bar top of it, it's the long a, a and wherever we have an N with a dot, it's the nasal sound jaha a is is what it ends with and wherever we have a bit with a dot below that, it's the hard sound example, D with the dot below is whereas a normal D is the jaha kalpana shabd na pahunche aise aparampar jaha kalpana shabd na pahunche aise aparampar neti neti vedh pukare neti neti vedh pukare mahima tori apar. I repeat. Jaha kalpana shabd na pahunche pahunche aise aparampar neti neti vedh pukare mahima tori apar.
Um may I ask everyone to please mute themselves, including myself, because sometimes you're cutting off for some reason. Some some words are getting cut off.
Is it better now? Okay. I would I would again repeat this just for the benefit of all, if in case I was cutting off. Jaha kalpana shabd na pahunche aise aparampar neti neti vedh pukare mahima tori apar. Will not go with the English meaning, this is here. Divya sanatna param dyaagana he jagdo dharo divya sanatna param dyaagana he jagdo dharo jagdo dharo divya sanatna param dyaagana he jagdo dharo mehrman aarti swikaro mehrman aarti swikaro.
Um Gopi, do you pronounce that? Because when singing they say parama, but you're saying prama.
Um yeah, no, it is divya sanatna prama, it is it is a prama, but I've added this a within parenthesis to indicate that extra syllable prama. So it's uh there is there is no prama in Hindi, but when we sing is the extra syllable is pronounced. But the word as such as param divya sanatna paramdyaagana, but wherever we are adding that extra syllable for pronouncing the word, I have added within the parenthesis.
I was talking about the beginning of the word, is it param or pram?
Uh it is uh param, it's not pram, did I did I say pram?
Maybe I misheard, sorry.
I I will again read this out. Divya sanatna paramdyaagana param dyaagana he jagdo dharo mehrman aarti swikaro mehrman aarti swikaro. Dhup deep chandan charchana bhog lagana phool chadhana dhup deep, I'll just add another k here. Dhup deep chandan charchana bhog lagana phool chadhana, I have added a d with a hard sound chadhana mara hi tumko lautana mara hi tumko lautana ahe badhai kr ahe badhai kr mehrman aarti swikaro mehrman aarti swikaro. Repeat this verse. Dhup deep chandan charchana bhog lagana phool chadhana mara hi tumko lautana ahe badhai kr mehrman aarti swikaro mehrman aarti swikaro.
Gopi, would you please repeat the meaning, the pronunciation when the D has a dot under it?
Okay. Uh I will take the example of this word.
Yeah.
Badhai, so there's a hard D, the H following that, so that becomes badha. This is the, the as in as a dirt and the H following that makes it badha, badhai. Similarly, chadhana. Is that clear, Dinah?
I I don't understand what you mean by a hard D.
Yeah, so uh sure, so when uh said at the beginning, when we have a D without a dot below that, we will pronounce that as the, the as in T H E, the. But when we have a D with a dot below that, it becomes D as in dirt, right? We it's it's like the normal D. When we have a D without a dot, we should be pronouncing that it as the.
Yeah, yeah.
As in deep.
It's like you, it's an aspiration, you 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 push out a little bit. The.
Uh yeah, so so I will give an example of the normal D here, so this is used here in the word deep. This is deep, but not deep, this is deep, this is badhai. Or I have a word called bada. B A would use this D with a dot below that and A becomes bada. But when we have a without the dot, it will be bada.
Thank you.
Sure. So we'll go to the next verse. Sakal nidhi ke m aran ho. And here I have an N with a dot below, that becomes na. Uh it's a different pronunciation, it's not uh like manna, where you say prepronounce N as normal na, here with N with a dot, it will be na, na. Karan sakal nidhi ke m aran ho sakal viswa aran haare ho sakal nidhi ke m aran ho sakal viswa aran haare ho. M sam or nahi tumki ho tum sam or nahi tumki ho he sat utaro he sat utaro mehrman aarti swikaro mehrman aarti swikaro. I repeat. Sakal nidhi ke tum aran ho sakal viswa aran haare ho tum sam or nahi N with a dot on top of it makes it a nasal sound, nahi tumki ho he sat utaro mehrman aarti swikaro, mehrman aarti swikaro. Man is mind and aarti is aarti swikaro, so accept accept my mind as the Aarti, as my Aarti, mehr. Go to the next verse. Sakal charachar tumhari maya maya bhi to tumhari chaya sakal charachar tumhari maya maya bhi to tumhari chaya tumhara ant na koi paya tumhara ant na koi paya tum ho anant kharo tum ho anant kharo mehrman aarti swikaro mehrman aarti swikaro. I repeat the verse. Sakal charachar tumhari maya maya bhi to tumhari chaya tumhara ant na koi paya tum ho anant kharo mehrman aarti swikaro, mehrman aarti swikaro. We go to the next verse. Apne ko jab jo nahi, sorry, this is it, N. Apne ko jab jo nahi janey mahima tumhari kya pehchane apne ko jab jo nahi janey mahima tumhari kya pehchane jo kuchh bhi kehate anjaney jo kuchh bhi kehate anjaney guna in there's a N, dot below guna gatay tumhara guna gatay tumhara apne ko jab jo nahi janey mahima tumhari kya pehchane jo kuchh bhi kehate anjaney guna gatay tumhara mehrman aarti swikaro mehrman aarti swikaro. This is the last verse and then there's a bridge, it is the one or the opening lines of the Aarti which is here, so this is the last verse that we're going to learn. Seema nahin tumhari krupa ko kya koi de sakta prabhu tumko. Again, here there is a day, it's not day because there is no dot below the D, it's day like in H E Y day. Seema nahin tumhari krupa ko kya koi de sakta prabhu tumko bhik tumhi do bhik tumhi do premi jano ko bhik tumhi do temi jano jano ko nit m sumaro nit tumhe sumaro mehrman aarti swikaro mehrman aarti swikaro. Repeat this verse. Seema nahin tumhari krupa ko kya koi de sakta prabhu tumko bhik tumhi do temi jano ko nit tumhe sumaro nit bhik tumhi do premi jano ko nit tumhe sumaro mehrman aarti swikaro mehrman aarti swikaro. Divya sanatna param dyaagana divya sanatna param dyaagana he jagdo dharo he jagdo dharo mehrman aarti swikaro mehrman aarti swikaro. So this is the
Gopi, I have a question, on the verse above the seema nahin why wouldn't you spell day as you said thay because it's pronounced the?
Um
Seema nahin, no, you passed it down below. Yes.
This one, yeah. Uh huh. Hmm right, but but I think we have been following the convention wherever we have a example, A, we are using H A Y and so similarly I used day for day and since we are differentiating the and D with D without a dot and D with a dot, I thought I'll keep it like this.
Okay.
Yeah, but if it if it's easy easy for learning, I think we can we can change it anyway, this is not the uh standard for uh you know, standard for standard for publishing the uh transliteration because you know, A or even H E Y would not be the right way way to translate, but because this is for learning, I think whatever is easy for everyone, we can we can put that.
Yeah. I think TH would be easier if it's really in fact pronounced the, they.
Uh huh. Uh say
Oh say, is it say or they, the?
Uh it is they, they.
Yeah, unfortunately, I get the feeling and tell me, Gopi, isn't it because your tongue is in a different place in your mouth? When you say day and they?
Yes.
And also I think that what's hard for me anyway is that I noticed that in in you have you have what I call aspiration, like the B H, like when we say bow's name, it's really bow. I can't say it right, but there's a huh and in English, we don't have a B followed by an H. We don't have a D followed by an H and it's very awkward. Um and now, yeah, so I see that happening here.
Yes.
Yeah, and not to confuse, maybe we can say THA Y rather than E Y, THA Y.
A Y, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Sure.
Then we'll know it's that impossible to pronounce for us Westerners word.
Okay, so the the other questions with the with the transliteration before we go to sing it?
I I do have a question, what does swikaro mean? Because it's such an amazing sounding word, I just don't know what it is.
Swikaro is accept.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's accept, accepted.
Thank you.
So So Uh About singing it once Without a break.
Yeah.
Okay. जहां कल्पना शब्द न पहुंचे ऐसे नेती नेती वेद पुकारे थोड़ी अपार दिव्य सनात्न प्रम दयाघन दिव्य सनात्न प्रम दयाघन हे जगदोधारो मेहर मन आरती स्वीकारो मेहर मन आरती स्वीकारो धूप दीप चंदन चर्चाना भोग लगाना फूल चढ़ाना तुम्हरा ही तुमको लौटाना कहे बढ़ाई करू मेहर मन आरती स्वीकारो मेहर मन आरती स्वीकारो ओ सकल निधि के तुम कारण हो सकल विश्व तारण हारे हो तुम सम और नहीं तुम ही हो हे सत्त अवतारो मेहर मन आरती स्वीकारो मेहर मन आरती स्वीकारो सकल चराचर तुम्हरी माया माया भी तो तुम्हरी छाया तुम्हरा अंत न कोई पाया तुम हो अनंत खरो मेहर मन आरती स्वीकारो मेहर मन आरती स्वीकारो ओ अपने को जब जो नहीं जाने महिमा तुम्हरी क्या पहचाने जो कुछ भी कहते अनजाने गुण गाते तुम्हरो मेहर मन आरती स्वीकारो मेहर मन आरती स्वीकारो सीमा ना ही तुम्हरी कृपा को क्या कोई दे सकता प्रभु तुमको भीक तुम्ही दो प्रेमी जनों को नित्य तुम्हे सुमरो मेहर मन आरती स्वीकारो मेहर मन आरती स्वीकारो ओ दिव्य सनात्न प्रम दयाघन दिव्य सनात्न प्रम दयाघन हे जगदोधारो मेहर मन आरती स्वीकारो मेहर मन आरती स्वीकारो ओ और मेहर बाबा की जय
It's gorgeous.
Yeah.
So, um The word for word translation is in another document, right, Gopi, that you're working on?
Yes, yes, I'm, I'm still working on, so even for the Adi Satchidanarati Bhav that we, uh, learnt couple of weeks ago. So I, I have, I have promised you all that I will be uploading, uh, that documentation along with the word for translation. So I'm almost there with that and I will do the same, this one and, uh, I will upload both of them. And we will have one more session of the सार्थी next week along with, uh, along with background and the story behind it.
Wonderful, wonderful, so exciting. You know, for me, I've been with Baba what twenty some years and this is the first time to really grasp these RTs, um, more fully. You know, with the right proper pronunciation because when it's sung as a group in RT at the Samadhi, you just don't, don't get it all, you know?
Yes, that's difficult to, yeah, integrate it right.
So great what you're doing.
Yeah.